We've got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant to approve the minutes from May 26th. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. With that, uh... We'll look at the addition first, since Jane is here. You can come forward there, Jane. We've got a request from the Barnesville Lines to conduct raffles at the Pitchfork, which is the Galaxy Club. Jane, you want to tell us about it, or what?
Sure. Well, our original applications were for, um, to have Lady Spun Night at the Legion in Barnesville. And of course, that got canceled due to the COVID. The Clay County Fair is canceled. All are being go-- everything is canceled. And then this came, this opportunity came up with the Pitchfork for us to work with them during their grand opening and during their Friday night events. And, but then, of course, that put us out of the city limits and put us into the county limits. So I had to come to you, and I worked with Roxy at the Gaming Control Board. I do have her email here as the request of this. This is the letter that's requested to say, to tell you that we had to cancel. We're now, we're working with the Pitchfork and hoping that the county will sign off and approve that so that we can start selling tickets on Friday night. She said if I can get my signature soon, I, she would probably be able to get me signed off and start selling tickets. So then, and then our, and then our raffle drop, our door prizes will be drawn then on July 3rd. So it's like, you know, we're going to sell our prizes in between that, tickets in between that.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions with Jane?
I'll second the motion. Kevin made a motion and I seconded him.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion by Kevin, second by Jenny to approve the, to conduct raffles at the Pitchfork. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane.
Appreciate it.
You're all set there, Jane?
Okay.
Good luck on that.
So who signs and then Frank will sign it, right?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Do you need that now?
I would. Yes, I emailed right to her this morning. I told her I'd try. I was on the phone with her in the car when I got here.
Do we need a copy of this?
Yep, I'll make a copy.
Thank you.
Okay. Kathy will go with your group to get an update on COVID-19. Cheryl and Jamie?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. We handed out the latest statistics about the positive cases. Those no longer, as you can see, those no longer needing isolation. Or in some instances, you see that it's called recovered. So we had 480 and now 425 are out of isolation. So that's good. Just 25 active cases at this point, and 30 deaths. All deaths are unfortunate, and we feel for the families, of course, that lost their loved ones to COVID. But those 30 deaths are mostly in long-term care, if not all. So that's, you know, again, with their compromised health conditions and, and the age, it's always a factor in trying to fight this virus. So, so that's the, that's what we have for the deaths. There's been a couple of deaths in Minnesota that have had no health conditions and are in their 30s and 40s. So there are still some people that can die from this virus that have no health conditions, so, which is unfortunate. And you can see the numbers as we continue doing the testing. You know, there still is the ramp-up, ramp-up of testing, both on the North Dakota side and the Minnesota side. So you see, the cases will continue to rise as well, but the people that are recovering are also there on the green line, so no longer needing isolation. So that's continuing to rise. And then the deaths are still remaining fairly low in the hospital systems. At Sanford and Essentia, they're still saying, you know, they're not overloaded with their ICU beds and their hospitalizations for COVID. So that's still good, that we aren't overwhelming our hospital system. So that's a, that's a positive thing on, on our, in our area. And then you can see on the little graph, it shows from May 18th, the number of cases and deaths, and then up through June 8th. So you see how the case counts are, are continuing. And then you see the ages on the back of the sheet. It shows still, in our area, the, the largest age group is the 20 to 29, and then the 30 to 39. So those folks are still acquiring the virus, but they're also recovering with usually no hospitalization. And the likely exposure continues. Most of it is community, we do know it's community spread, congregate care living centers, so residents and staff. So 35% in that area, which we knew was going to be one of our hotspots, is our congregate care setting. So that's, that's not unusual that we have the numbers in those various settings. So any questions on the data? So as, you know, as the businesses open up and we can talk about tomorrow, Governor Walz is, is moving to a new phase. So we are watching, because across the country, we see as things open up and people become a little bit more complacent, we might see an increase in spread. So we'll be watching our area. And of course, in the Fargo area, they've already opened up businesses and be, prior to Minnesota doing that. So we're, we're all watching across the metro area about, are we going to see an increase in spread as people are congregating more frequently? Churches are opening up. We know that when you sing, the spread of that virus goes further and there's more chance of spreading the virus. So, you know, we'll be watching that area as well. So we continue to talk about the same message is wash your hands, you know, wear your mask, six-foot distancing. So that, that hasn't changed at all. And maybe Jamie can talk about some of that, you know, information about what, what we're seeing. Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jamie.
Kathy and I were talking this morning, and I decided I would address the asymptomatic spread that we're hearing in the media right now. And it can be a challenge for us at the local level because of the information that is out there publicly and what is credible and what is not. And so the World Health Organization is, what's out there is that this asymptomatic spread is very rarely contagious, basically, from one person to the next if a person is asymptomatic. And so looking at our CDC and our MDH websites, that is not there. The debate that's going on right now is that that's what science is all about. You know, they come up with something and then they challenge it. And so we all remember that from our elementary school sciences, that they try to prove themselves wrong is what they're actually trying to do. So until we're told at the state level or even at the CDC level that asymptomatic spread is not a risk, we really need to focus on continuing to try to maintain that social distancing. And also, a key part of that is the case investigation and the contact tracing. And so we've worked really hard at the local level to connect with North Dakota. The proper channel is, because we have people that are going across the border and taking advantage of testing opportunities in North Dakota, our State Health Department is working with our staff that are currently trained to do case investigation and contact tracing. And so that has really provided us with an opportunity to, to respond quicker. And so that is happening at the local level. The key is really about doing that, that contact tracing and getting in touch with people quickly to educate them. And so really, that's the message that I want to share, is until the CDC or the Minnesota Department of Health tell us that asymptomatic spread can't happen, the best thing we can do is to be on top of that. So, thanks for that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, so the, has, has anybody looked at WHO's scientific evidence? Is that being reviewed? Do they, are they looking at some places that, that may have seen the virus earlier than what the United States has seen? Or I, I, I've heard the same thing, but I, and I haven't read the articles. You just see the headlines. And, and so I'm curious about that, in terms of what scientific evidence they've put out to back that.
And my assumption would be yes, because that's what science does. You know, they challenge each other. And so what I've seen is that it's not strong enough evidence, basically, to, to discount it. And so more research needs to be done.
It's probably encouraging.
It's, it's encouraging.
Right? For them to put that out, I would think that it would. Of course, there's a lot of differing opinions on the World Health Organization, but...
And, and it, you know, it, like you said, it's encouraging and we're hopeful. And that, that does make us feel like we can control it a little better. But again, the, more science needs to be done, and that's really what research is all about. So if they challenge each other, and, and that's how they, they know for sure.
Sure.
How it's being transmitted, so.
Okay, Cheryl will talk a little bit about...
Good morning. So Jamie was talking about, you know, people going over to North Dakota for testing and that. And I did speak a little bit about static site testing that was going on over in Fargo at last week's board meeting. And I just wanted to also mention that because of the Red River Valley Task Force, we're able to provide an opportunity for businesses in Clay County, as well as some of our healthcare workers that may have not been able to get tested. We, we did have the National Guard that came in, that is still continuing to do testing at our long-term care facilities and assisted living. But we have a, a number of adult corporate foster care facilities that have not been able to participate in that until now. So it is continuing to grow. I am in very frequent contact with all of these facilities. And so many of those healthcare workers now are able to sign up and, and go over to get testing done. And then we're able to follow up with those results as part of our case investigation and contact tracing. I also wanted to just mention, as Kathy was talking about, you know, more of our businesses opening up and, and that, that, you know, people are returning to work. And we are still getting some calls from people who are concerned if they have been a close contact of someone that has been deemed positive. There's a little bit of confusion on how long they need to stay at home. So for anyone who is positive generally, and they have symptoms, it is 10 days for them to stay at home, and then plus three days without a fever, without using fever-reducing medication. And then if they are positive and they do not have any symptoms, and they are part of critical staffing infrastructure, say they are a healthcare worker, and if they are not able to return to work, they would, they would be in a critical spot for staffing. As long as they are asymptomatic and are able to wear the proper P E, PPE, they, they can return to work. If at some time during, during that work day or within the following couple of weeks, they would have any type of symptoms, they would be sent home immediately. For the people that have had close contact with someone who is positive with symptoms, then they are asked to stay home for 14 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, you going to do any more TV appearances?
Only if Kathy makes.
Hey, I'm not testing what you did a couple of weeks ago. Did we report on the results? Don't we get them, or?
The mask testing at the Armory?
Yeah, we had 845 tested with any...
Yeah, about 840 tests, and only 1% was positive.
1%?
So all of, yep, all of those people have been notified. There was some North Dakota folks that came over as well. They were not turning anyone away. So it was both Minnesota and North Dakota people that came through.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And so the static testing, like Cheryl talked about, isn't a mass testing. So those folks, and that's on Fargo side, those are appointment only. We haven't, the governor hasn't issued any further mass testing events like the Armory one. So we'll see if he determines there's a need for that. But the positive amounts were low throughout Minnesota, so.
So, so the, if I can, I, the positive tests, were those then put in to start the contact tracing?
Yes.
And you said that there were maybe a few that came from North Dakota? Does somebody notify that side too, so the contracting, you know?
Yes.
Contact tracing goes over there too?
That's correct. And we have a great...
If you don't do that, then you're...
Right. We have a lead, and one of my staff is a lead in case investigation and contact tracing, and actually is a trainer. So she's training some of my other staff. And we have a few that will come on. I've been working with Darren on taking a few people from outside our employment. So we can hire a few more that can take that on, because it's a seven-day-a-week process. So it's a lot of work, and there's a lot of contacts. It takes a long time, because, you know, there, there's a lot of phone calls. People are afraid sometimes to answer the phone when they, when they don't know the number that's calling them. And they're still afraid if, even if they hear, well, this is the Public Health Department, or this is Minnesota Department of Health calling. So we lose some people. It's the same on the Fargo side. We lose people to, they just don't answer their phones. They're afraid to answer their phone. So we encourage people, if they're getting a call from Public Health or Minnesota Department of Health, to at least pick up the call, and so we can, we can provide information to them. So we're working very diligently on, on getting those cases contacted right away, and then the contact tracing happens as well. And Minnesota Department of Health is still doing a large portion across the state, along with the local public health agencies. So we're working and partner with them. So that contact tracing and case investigation should be much improved from when it previously was.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
A few weeks ago, we authorized use of funds to hire any, anyone locally to do that. Is that something that you needed to use or not?
Yes, that's, I'm working with Darren on that. I've received information from Minnesota Department of Health of, of how they're reimbursing those folks that they've hired. So we have the reimbursement rates. And so Darren and I are working on the process to onboard them for a temporary or seasonal process. So 90 days of working as much as we need them to. It's particularly important in, on the weekends, because so much of the team is working the five days a week and then have to put in the weekend hours for contact tracing. So yes, thanks for asking. We are trying to ramp that up. Our staff are not able to do it full-time, because they have their other work that they need to do as well. So it's a lot of part-time. And then there was questions about the antibody testing, I believe, last meeting, or maybe the meeting before. And the health systems and family healthcare are doing the antibody testing, but it's typically with, with their healthcare provider that's requesting it. So with Sanford and Essentia, if your healthcare provider requests, or if you request of your healthcare provider that you're interested in having an antibody test, they may or may not say that's a good idea. That medical community is, they'll use the antibody testing and, and then also the clinical follow-up to determine who has recovered and how long they're at lower risk of infection. So that would be part of some of the studies they're doing. Because they still, it's not definitive about how much protection you have, and would you be protected entirely if you have a second, if you have a second infection. So that helps that healthcare system to determine that. I know family healthcare has done some antibody testing with some of their, at their testing site as well. And then, as you can see from, from our Stay Safe Minnesota, the governor's moving to Phase 3 tomorrow. So that's when the restaurants and, and bars have the ability to open up to a percentage, 50% capacity, indoors and outdoors. We had some concerns from some business owners that they didn't have a patio, so they really couldn't do the outdoor patio opening up to, you know, to allow their patrons to come. But now this will change that with their 50% capacity, and of course, not to exceed 250. So that gives the opportunity for the restaurants and bars to have some, provide some service. And the salons and barber shops kind of are still doing that 50%. So he's really opening up some of the, in fitness centers and gyms, he's opening up some of the establishments, so they can actually do, they're still needing to do the six-foot distancing. They're still requiring their workers to wear masks. But there, there at least is some opening up to, you know, it's been challenging to be on this, in our metro area, when you're competing against businesses and establishments in Fargo, who have been able to open up sooner than, than Morehead. So, you know, that's, that's been challenging for people and certainly stressful. My food pool and lodging inspectors have been fielding calls, because there's concerns, there's either complaints about establishments already opened and providing service, and there's complaints about people not wearing masks, that are workers. So they're fielding all of those calls. And they've worked with the Attorney's Office as well to determine kind of follow-ups to those complaints and who enforces some of that. But tomorrow, we'll alleviate some of that for the establishment, so.
My question, who enforces all this stuff? Is there anybody designated yet to enforce this?
Well, for, for the restaurants, that's what my inspectors are working on. They're working with MDH. And then they also have been communicating with the Attorney's Office to determine, you know, who's going to follow up on, on some of that COVID, you know, response for those establishments. So that's still in the works. MDH is still working through that process. So right now, the follow-up is they're really making the calls and informing the establishments about what the, you know, recommendations are and requirements are from the governor. So they're really...
Are there fines for that and stuff, if you do go over your 50%?
We don't have any fines established at this time. So that's more to work on, that they'll determine if that's, because our, our contract is with MDH, Minnesota Department of Health. So we need to work with them to determine if there is going to be any fines or not. So right now, there isn't. There's just more education and follow-up.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Anything further?
There's no press conference tomorrow. They canceled the press conference because of other things going on. So there won't be a press conference tomorrow.
Go ahead, Jenny.
In terms of what the county has for PPE stockpile that I'm sure you share with the law enforcement, or I'm not sure what, my guess is that that has been depleted because of the last few months. Is there any work that you're doing to re-establish that going forward?
Cheryl can talk about that. That's kind of in her area.
So we did receive a cash or a supply of PPE from our West Central Healthcare Coalition. We have not depleted that entirely. It's been allocated very carefully to try and, and preserve as much of that supply as we can. I also am in contact with Gabe, our county emergency manager, because he has received, over time, some supplies of PPE. So we work together. If we have a facility that has a request for something that we do not have in stock, then we go back to our West Central Healthcare Coalition. And there is a process for facilities to request that too. So if, if our, our regional healthcare coalition does not have that supplied, then it can be requested from the state level as well.
Okay. I just, in the news, you've seen different, different departments in different cities testing positive. And so I want to make sure that our employees have that, if they need that. So I understand that we're trying to use it carefully and, and whatnot. But if it's available, let's allow that.
And Gabe, Gabe has gotten supplies for all the employees. So when we open up more in our county, that our employees will have that, the supply that they need. And maybe, Cheryl, I was just thinking of, maybe you want to mention the fit testing that we...
Sure. So another opportunity from the Red River Valley Task Force is a, an individual from the North Dakota Department of Health has offered to come over and do fit testing, which is something that is necessary when a person wears an N95 to ensure that you have a proper fit. And so he is working with me and going to be contacting facilities that may request some fit testing, so that they can use properly the N95 supply that they have. And so that process is just getting started. He's just starting to make contacts with facilities. And then he will basically do a train-the-trainer thing. So he will, they will designate a, a person that can take the training and then can proceed forth with training the rest of their staff.
Another benefit for us to have that Red River Valley Task Force and to be able to share resources without having the expense of that. So that's been great.
Okay. Alrighty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for keeping us up to date on this, and for doing the work that you're doing.
And I want to thank all my, my team. These are two of the members, and of course, Josh, and there's a number of other people in our department that are working vigorously around, you know, often seven days a week with COVID. And then, of course, we work closely with Gabe, our emergency manager. So, and then we work with Chad Stengland from the city of Morehead as well. So we, we have a team that continues to work. And, and there's a, there's a lot of work to go around. So I appreciate all of them working on this diligently, so.
Mr. Chair, I know you've announced that they're not having the task force meeting tomorrow. You know, I'm not sure what, if, how we want to go, if we keep this as a standing update on, on every board, or now that we're entering Phase 3 tomorrow, I mean, if we want to do it as bigger issues come up, you know, I'll leave that up to you, but...
I, I, I like to still see the data that you've been bringing us. And I, I would certainly think for the next three or four weeks, it would be nice to still see that, at least, to...
Sure.
As things open up more, if there's anything that's positive, we'd like to know about it. If there is anything that isn't positive.
Sure.
We need to know about it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, with that, we'll go into the next thing that you've got there, Kathy, and that is to fill a .6 employee in the grant-funded program. Want to talk about that?
Yes, we had an individual that, that resigned. And she was a .6 employee for our grant program, Child and Teen Checkup Outreach. And we have another .6. So we had 2 .6 employees. So the, the remaining .6 person is interested in working full-time now. So that was a nice seamless, it's a nice seamless way to cover that .6 instead of advertising and hiring for that position. So she would, she would add the additional .4 hours to be 1.0, 1.0, 1 FTE. And then the remaining .2 hours, we can cover with a variable hour employee. So it saves us from having to advertise and hire and train in. So it's, it's a very effective way to, to cover that vacancy of .6. So my request was to allow the .6 employee to move up to 1, 1.0 FTE. And that doesn't completely cover the .6, but then to use the variable hour person we, we have currently in our office that can cover some of that work. So that would be my request. There's a little bit of savings, even doing the .6 to 1 FTE and then using a .2 variable hour.
Okay, we discussed this in PICC. And PICC, again, we went through just what you said there, and we decided it was a good move too. So one of the wishes, any questions for Kathy, I guess?
Can I come motion to approve the request?
Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny, second by Grant, to approve the request. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you very much. And just one, one more, just an FYI, is we have, we had school contracts, school nursing for all of our schools in our, in our rural settings. And we have two schools that have contacted us, just said, they wanted to inform us they're ending their school contract with us. They wanted to inform us they're ending their school contract with us. So it's Barnesville and Holly. And so those two schools decided to hire our public health nurses that they are currently using. So they're going to hire them on their own and continue with that nurse. But that nurse will be part of their school. So we are losing those two contracts for the next school year.
So are those people considered part of Clay County or are they just?
They will now be, the two nurses will be now part of the employment there. They will no longer be an employee of Clay County, so.
Okay, very good, okay. Thank you for that, all right. All righty.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go with the committee reports. Jim, you want to start us off today?
Sure do. On Wednesday, June 3rd, I attended the Morehead, the City of Morehead Planning Commission in which the commission approved the final replat for the northeast corner of the Morehead High School property, where it wraps around behind Super Frog in preparation for the expansion project. And that was the final replat approval. And then on Thursday, June 4th, I attended the Clay County Collaborative Governance Board. And we discussed 2020 budget items coming up. The fiscal year starts for the Clay County Collaborative on the 1st of July. And we had to discuss the NCTS that funds the Clay County Collaborative has cut our funding 15% to 20%, I believe, the first two quarters this year. So we had to make adjustments with the budgets and the amount that is funded for the various, something like 20-odd programs that the collaborative funds. And so that was quite a lengthy meeting, and that's my report.
Okay. Grant, you got any report about fishing or anything?
I participated in the pick meeting. We already discussed that. We did have a.
During that meeting, from the sheriff too, on the previous week's problems around the region. So that was it for me.
Okay, Jenny?
Thank you. Yesterday, I attended with yourself the One Watershed One Plan virtual meeting of the Wild Rice Watershed, both the policy and the planning meetings. Good information there, very informative reports covering all the different geographies, the three geographies of the watershed, moving into some comment periods now. And then we'll have another meeting in July. Is that what I gathered? Did you get that too?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
July, yeah.
All right, and then I worked with a landowner on permit questions on Highway 10. I'll work with Matt Jacobson on that a little bit further. And in terms of just observing how we've done these meetings over the COVID issue, one question has come to my mind is whenever we see these press conferences from the governor's office, you always see translators. And so my question is, does this board have the ability to close caption, to allow for citizens to have better engagement and understanding over what we cover here? Is that something that you can just add on to the programming? Are we doing enough to allow citizens with disabilities accessibility to these meetings?
We are. If you look at our webpage, we actually have a section that deals with accessibility. We're required through the state to have that. And so it meets the different needs, the different requirements that all people would need to be able to participate in our.
Okay, all right, good deal. And then, as I said in last week's meeting, understanding the issues that we're seeing among the region and the nation, I continue to be available to discuss people's concerns in regards to any racial inequities that they may see. And the door is open and my contact information is on our website. So that concludes my reports.
Kevin?
The only meeting that I had was the executive committee meeting for the diversion authority yesterday morning. Items, primarily the items of discussion were the contested case, which started yesterday. There were some other things that were talked about regarding some, the processes for if quick take is needed on the North Dakota side and how that's handled. There was a legislative update given from Rocky. But really, they're anticipating the KLOMR maybe coming out within the next month or so. They keep saying that. But the, and then yesterday afternoon, I did sit in on the start of the contested case. I was able to view all the opening statements and everything that was going on. And the process right now, it's the diversion authority witnesses are first. And it started off with Mayor Mahoney. And then he was cross-examined. And then Mayor Judd just read his statement into the record. There was no cross-examination of his testimony. Then it was followed up by Mr. Ruer, the executive director of Eventide. And he gave a, just a testimony regarding the importance of that, this project and what had happened in 2009, when they had to move everybody out and that type of thing. And then Dr. Zimmman testified, and there was cross-examination of him as well. And that ended that. And then today, there are additional diversion authority witnesses that'll go on certainly through today and probably tomorrow. And then the DNR has, I believe, a half a dozen witnesses that they intend to call to substantiate why they allowed the permit. And then when that is complete, then it will be the Clay Wilken, JPA, and the Buffalo Reds turn to do their. And it's anticipated that cross-examination from all those witnesses will happen by both the diversion authority attorneys and the DNR attorneys. So I intend to sit on that quite a bit as much as I can this week. There are links available if people, you know, but I think they have to go through the law judge's office to get the necessary number and whatever to WebEx. It's all done on WebEx. So I have been, I have been watching it through our executive group at the city hall in Fargo. We were able to social distance there and monitor the testimony, so.
Mr. Chairman, can you tell us where the actual proceedings are taking place?
Yes, let's see, it's in St. Paul. It's in administrative, it's not, I don't believe it's part of a courthouse. It's an administrative law judge that's doing it. And they're in, I think, their own building. What I gathered was they're in a building that's pretty much still on lockdown because one of the first things the judge said, if there are people that wanted to be there in person, they gave instructions on how they could be escorted in to the courtroom where she's handling this, so. It started off with some technical difficulties, of course, with the multiple. I would imagine there was, I think, from what I could gather, there might have been up to two dozen links that were going on from various areas. So, yeah, it's quite interesting. I do want to say I was quite impressed with the diversion authority's opening statement as well as the Minnesota DNR, I think, gave a very good opening statement on behalf of the project and why they issued the permit, so. Continues.
Okay. My meetings were pick, which we already covered here during the meeting. And yesterday too, the Wild Rice Watershed Board though, which has been covered by Jenny. And other than that, excuse me, last Thursday, I was part of a meeting, excuse me, here, that our staff was involved in over the law enforcement center, you know. And I just have to say, I was very proud to be part of a group there. Gabe tweeted and ran that meeting there. And to sit there amongst our sheriff's department, our, the mort police department, the fire department, the national guard and stuff like that, it really made me proud to be part of a group that is really taking care of this peaceful protests that are going on and stuff like that. It was just, I mean, most of us are probably sitting at home, watching it on TV and thinking, oh, this is all going, it's going good. There's some problems here. But when you're part of the meeting and stuff like that, of planning all that, it really made me proud to be that. Thank you to Sheriff's Department for really arranging that. And for all the people that are involved in that, they did a great job. Thank you very much. And with that, Steve?
Last Tuesday, I was participating in pick, which has been addressed. We will continue to meet again today to, as the governor moves into phase, next phase of what impacts that'll have to our safely returning to work policy. On Wednesday, I toured the campus with Joe on a series of campus issues. On Thursday, we had a management meeting where we discussed our safely return to work policy. Received a public health update from Kathy and her staff. And also discussed the budget process. Budgets are due here from our department heads on June 19th. I met with Shelley Jeffers yesterday afternoon. We've been meeting on an ongoing basis to address courts and what that's going to look like moving forward. Under our policy, we've been having hearings, I guess, through this COVID. But they've been restricting what types of hearings they're having. They're looking at now, the Supreme Court in Minnesota has, is actually test piloting in five counties what it may look like to open up. But the goal for the Supreme Court is to have, is to have a window open at every courthouse by June 15th. We have returned and we have a window here. Our citizens are required, just like the rest of our departments, to call in for appointments and work with court security to get through. They're still not looking at any jury trials until, in Clay County, until the last weekend of, or last week of July. But one of the things that they, we are starting to do some planning on is that she's worked very closely with Joe in looking at social distancing and what the courtrooms are going to look like. One of the challenges that we've faced at to this point is when they do start bringing those juries in, we need to have some additional space. And so we're talking about coordinating the use of meeting room B when juries come in to be able to social distance appropriately. We're also being challenged a little bit because our conference spaces on the first floor for courts don't allow for social distancing. And so they're moving their conference spaces into our current jury assembly room on the first floor. So that's created some challenges, but they'll continue to work through that. I did receive an email recently from AE2S. They have been working with the city of Georgetown in regards to trying to get environmental monitoring easement. That's part of the Corps of Engineers' request to look at establishing baselines for, once the diversion is built, to make sure that there aren't any negative impacts on land. And they've been challenged a little bit with the city of Georgetown getting on their agenda first because of the COVID issue. And so that's provided some challenges. But they've reached out asking if there's any willingness of the board to help coordinate a meeting to get before that, before their city council to address that easement issue, so.
Well, I certainly think that maybe, maybe we could have you maybe send a letter to the city of Georgetown, maybe suggesting that they try to work with this. That's, it's kind of the timing is of the essence on these things, as we've known, to get these easements. You know, I think at the same point in time, we can remind them that we will, we will work with them to try to make sure that we can establish for them as part of this whole process where they, we can work with them and the Buffalo Red River Watershed District to establish 100-year flood protection for the city, which they currently do not have. So I just think it would be good to send a message to them, encouraging them to work with AE2S on those rights of entry. I, you know, I guess I would make a motion to have our administrator do that.
Second? Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant to notify Georgetown to be involved with AE2S. Any further discussion?
And the other things I talked about too, regarding the working with them to establish 100-year protection and.
Okay.
I have a question. Is it just because they haven't met? Is it a contact issue, did not have the right telephone numbers? Sometimes I wonder if a phone call is better than.
It appears that, I did see an email thread that starting back, as far back as April, they were, they're making attempts having contact with the city of Georgetown to meet. But it, part of what they've established originally was the city of Georgetown has said they're only dealing with, not dealing with any other business other than, other than the bills and things like that. But as Commissioner Campbell said, due to the time sensitivity of this issue, the Corps is wanting to get, moving forward on these easements. And so I think that's where the push is at this point.
Any further discussion? All in favor of notifying them?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Okay.
And then just the last thing I would note for our citizens is next week, our board meeting will be held at 5:30 in the evening. And we will follow that at 6:30 with the Board of Equalization.
All righty.
I have one other thing. I have one other thing, sorry. I have one other thing.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, a few years ago, if you recall, I had asked us to consider a host fee of sorts for Holly Township for hosting the landfill. And that would go to the township to kind of deal with some of the nuisances or issues, if you will, that are brought up due to having the landfill in their township. And in seeing how that, the need for what we do out there has grown and any potential construction out there, I'm asking both Grant and Kevin, since you're on the Solid Waste Committee, to kind of work with Kirk in terms of maybe an additional $2,000 to $2,500 to go to the township on that. And I think that it's been something that the township has used. And I think it's definitely a well-served payment that we would send them.
Yeah, Commissioner Mojo, I don't, I certainly don't think we need to wait to go back to the advisory committee. We did, we did talk with the advisory committee about that. We agree with you. So I think maybe we can, I'm going to be meeting with Kirk today. And maybe we can bring forward that formal request to that next, at our next meeting. But I think there was concurrence with what you're suggesting there. So I don't see a problem with it, so.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we're going to go to the closed session. Need a motion? I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
We got a motion by Grant, second by Jim, to go into closed session at this time. All in favor?
Aye. Move to open.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant, to reopen the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, okay.
Move to adjourn.
And we are adjourned. And we are adjourned.